Monday, June 5th of the Manona City Council. Will the clerk please call the role?
Alder Core.
Here.
Alder Honquist.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Kitzler.
Here.
Alders Spade and more are excused. Mayor O'Connor.
Here. Is there a motion or I'm sorry, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And now is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 15th meeting?
Move approval.
Second.
Any changes or additions? All in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Appearances, we have one appearance, Jane Pollan. Could you step up to the podium, please? She would like to speak about neighborhood marijuana disturb- about neighborhood disturbances and the marijuana ordinance. And if you could state your name and your address? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jane Pollan, is this on? And I live at 5101 Gordon Avenue, apartment number six. I went to the, thank you for hearing me this evening as well, I appreciate it. This is my first city council meeting. And I went to the police department this morning because there are residents in my building that are smoking marijuana right on the street in front of my apartment building. I am a teacher and usually I spend my summers in Colorado teaching. However, this summer I am remaining here. I am really disturbed about it. Not only do they smoke marijuana in front of the building, they smoke it in their apartments also, which permeates to my apartment. I will have be having some family members stay with me for a week or 10 days, of which are children. And I don't want them to think that this is okay with me. I'm not clear about, I read about the ordinance, I'm not clear about it. So I think that's one of the reasons I'm here as well, to see if I even have a stand on this. I have contacted the landlords numerous times, this will be my third year living here. In my lease, it states that illegal substances means for immediate with withdrawal from that apartment building. The same people have been doing this for the last two and a half years. I don't know who to turn to anymore. I don't feel that I need to be uprooted. I am a good tenant. I pay close to $900 a month to live there. I live in the city of Manona. And I don't feel safe. I don't know if it means that we need to start doing a neighborhood watch. I don't know what positive steps I can take by myself or with other people because it permeates throughout that block, throughout that radius of Gord- from St. Teresa down Gordon Avenue. My building is right on the corner of Gordon and St. Teresa. I don't know if this is going to go away. The people that, the landlord that I started with kind of just dropped the ball and she has her big fancy apartments now over by the river. The new people that, the new company that bought this, they're stating to me that they've only been there for a year now, which I totally understand. However, the traffic in and out of the apartment building is more than, and I lived there, more than a New York City subway. Okay? It's not, it's not really that safe. And I should feel safe for just paying rent and living. I should feel safe. I go to work every day. I do not pay my rent by drug money. And there are times where I, I am either out socializing or I am at school working very late and I come home and it's dark, especially in the fall and winter months. And I should feel okay walking from my car, which needs to be parked on the street, into my apartment building. And with this, the other thing, I should stick to the topic, excuse me, but there's so many things that are, that are wrong there. And, but this is really making me nervous, I guess. Yesterday afternoon and again today, the same people were in the same spot doing the same thing. And usually I'm at school, so I don't know if this has been going on outside of the apartment. It's a new tenant that is directly across the hall from me. All the good tenants are gone. Okay? So what's coming in, you guys need to know this, what's coming in is not good. And there are people, there are taxpayers on the other side of the street that have been calling the police about the same thing. So maybe that makes a difference to somebody. I don't know. But it's not, people that are being, that are able to rent, in my building, I can only speak of my building. There are eight units in that building. There are three of us that are upstanding citizens. Three of us that are upstanding citizens. So I don't know where to go anymore. I don't know, I've gone to the landlord, I'm on record for two years. I've gone to the police. I talked with the chief, the police chief this morning. I came here and said maybe if I show my face instead of a phone call, they'll know I'm really concerned about this. And there are other people in the apartment building that are fearful of doing what I'm doing right now. I'm not afraid. I work with special ed kids every single day in my life. These people don't scare me. There's nothing to be, there's nothing to be afraid of to stand up to tell the truth. I talk to my kids about that every single day. Tell the truth, even if your voice shakes.
Well, thank you. April, did you have something to say about the police chief?
I, I know that, I believe he talked to you today, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And my understanding, we just had a very brief conversation about it, is, is he usually advises, you know, when things are going on, if we can get the calls right away, that helps them, you know, because if they're driving by and they don't see anybody out doing what you just said, you know, it's, it's much easier to catch people in the act when it's going on. But I know in your work, it's, yeah, it's hard to do that.
And it's not a priority anymore.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess what I, my question is, is that I read it briefly, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but is the ordinance with, in regards to medicinal, it's just marijuana is fine to have in your, okay, in your private residency is different. I live in a communal residency. I don't, there, this is not a private residency. When my landlord can give me 24 hours notice to come into the premises, I am not in a private residency. So how does that apply to my living quarters? How does that apply? It went, and if, you know, now they've got buddies coming in there and doing this, and I don't, I, I'm not going to accuse or suspect of anything else going on, but I'm not stupid. And when it's a lot of traffic in and out of those apartments, that's not people visiting. That's people stopping by. So I'm looking to you to say, how do we clean it up? How do we clean it up as a community so that it doesn't go downhill because this is Manona? How do, what do we do?
Thank you, Alder Kitzler. And I know we normally don't get into a back and forth in public appearances, but Alder Kitzler?
So what, so with the new landlord, what was their response? That they've just, they're new?
Call the police, you have to have, you have to have, you know, so many calls or whatever. But again, in my lease, that's not what it says. And then I have my windows open and they're higher than a kite saying such stupid stuff on the sidewalk, you know, lighting a grill in the street because they're higher than a kite. And it's, it's just, I mean, it would be laughable if it wasn't. Grown men, get a job, go to work and stop this. Because it's, it's not okay. It's just not okay as, as a, as a resident.
And, and so you said in the last two years, you've been calling the police on them? What was the response back then when the, before the ordinance, for example?
They would come by, but then by the time, you know, it was, they were, it was, they were done. It was mostly inside at that point. It was, it was permeating throughout the building. Two residents left. Good, good residents. So-
So has it been outside mainly since the ordinance passed?
Oh, it's both, but now I'm noticing, again, just because of home.
It's summer too.
You know?
Well, and use out in public is still illegal.
Right.
Whether it's the ordinance or otherwise.
And then-
So it didn't change.
A guy from the next building is over there with his dog and they're passing the joint back and forth, sitting on the front steps. I mean, I'm sorry. I don't want to come home to it. I don't. So however it's passing, I don't want to be the old lady on the hill either. I don't want to be the fuddy duddy that, you know, thinks that marijuana should, is a blah, blah, blah. That's not the point. The point is this, how is it impacting people that are not in a private residence? I'm choosing not to do it. But I have to deal with it because there was an ordinance passed? There has to be some kind of amendment to this that states, excuse me, private residence versus communal residence. It's two different things.
Well, thank you, and we will be following up with the police. And Doug, did you have something?
Yeah. Just to clarify, what the ordinance change was to make possession legal and use in a private residence legal. And right now, at least the way it's defined, would include your, if you rent an apartment unit, that, that's your private residence under the ordinance. So that may be something, you know, to look at. As far as them smoking it outside, that we, that did not change. That was illegal. $200 forfeiture under local ordinance before, and it still, still is. And I was actually just starting to write an email to the chief, asking him, telling him about your appearance, that you talked to him and follow up with him on this issue. Because I, I agree, you should be able to come home and not have to walk through that. And that's, like I say, that, that didn't change under the revised ordinance.
Can you, can you contact the landlords of those buildings? Or is that not of your jurisdiction? I mean-
Yeah, it's not really our, I mean, the landlord can still, they, the ordinance change didn't affect the contract. If they have a lease agreement that says you can't use illegal drugs-
Mm-hmm.
And that's grounds for eviction.
Right.
That's still enforceable. I mean, marijuana is still illegal, it's still, state law would still apply. So not that the Dane County DA is going to prosecute simple marijuana possession or use, but, you know, they, legally, the landlord, if they want to, they could take action.
Or not?
Well, that's a, right, or not, sure. Just like a lot of other reasons they could evict people if they choose not to, but.
But if it's in the lease, then what? They should, but I don't think we can force them to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Do appreciate you coming here.
Yeah, we do. And we will follow up with the police. Okay, do, will you follow up with me at all in helping me to feel safe where I live? Send us, send me an email so I have your email address? Okay. That'd be great. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no other appearances, there is no public hearing tonight. Consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Except, Joan, there's still a license in here for ShopCo, correct?
Yes.
Well, when we vote on the consent agenda, I'm going to abstain from, from that agenda.
Does that mean you don't have a quorum then?
Um, we do have, still, three.
Three is still?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah. I mean, we're okay, it's a fifty percent. I believe, okay. I'll have to, I mean, I-
Okay.
Is it the I D or?
Oh, sure.
Yes, yes. Sorry.
No, you have to stay.
I'm sorry. All in favor of approving this consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. There is no unfinished business. New business, consideration of beer garden dates for Badger Bowl, 506 East Badger Road, Madison. Doing business as Manona Village Lanes, 208 Owen Road, license review committee, there's a request for immediate action on this. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Still moved.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve this?
Move, move approval.
Is there a second? All right, any discussion? Joan, were you going to discuss, explain this or?
I can wait.
Um, this is that, um, they did this, they started this last year, they have a minimum number of beanbag toss tournaments and maybe one or other type of event that they wanted to be able to expand their current patio area to be a little bigger to accommodate more people. We have had no complaints last year on what they did last year, so we're feeling like that we're pretty safe with this for resident feeling about it. So it isn't, there is no, it's not a change at all from last year, it's just the list of their chosen dates.
That was my question.
Okey dokey.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, consideration of resolution seventeen dash six dash two one eight three, approval to submit 2016 compliance maintenance annual report, review and recommendations. Public Works Director, is there a motion to take this out of order?
Still moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Move approval.
All in favor, or, well, Dan, explain, then we will vote.
Probably a little more detail this year, we have newer faces on the council. This is the annual CMAR report that the DNR requires us to do every year. They are looking for a city council resolution accepting the CMAR. It's a report card of our sanitary sewer collection system, does not need to go through the Public Works Committee. Basically, the, the second whereas is probably the most important paragraph here. The CMAR is an assessment of the city sanitary sewer collection system, both in its physical operation and maintenance capabilities and performance, as well as its financial ability to adequately support necessary operation and maintenance activities to sufficiently provide reliable and satisfactory service. They want to know that you know the condition of your sanitary sewer system. This report card says that we talked about it and then we sent it into them and then they file it and then they get back in touch with us as to the operations and maintenance of it. So it's something that we, we look at annually, we fill it out, going through, there's a financial component to this. Every year in our sanitary sewer operating budget, we dedicate $25,000 to, to high cost repairs such as impellers, seals, motor replacement, things like that. That way, the DNR knows that we do have money to sufficiently maintain these, these pumping stations. So we, we do have adequate financial support for the operation and maintenance of the pumps. Something new this year that they are collecting, it's just data gathering at this point, it's energy efficiency and use. They, they had us calculate the kilowatt hours of all of our list station pumps and any natural gas used at our pumping station. So we collected that data, that's now in the report. My guess is in a few years, they're going to have some new requirements with, with the power component of this, of this report. They have questions regarding the cleaning and televising of our sanitary sewer system, which we do every year. We dedicate, I think we're, we're around $50,000, net number's dropping every year as we're proving to be more efficient in our cleaning of the sanitary sewer system. So we have a certain portion that we televise and clean every year. We're going to keep that going and the DNR is very satisfied with that. And that comes back to city council by approving that money for us to do that job. So a lot of communities can't say that. In a nutshell, that, that's pretty much it. My final component on here is the INI. We do have some issues with INI and that kind of came to the surface last year, as you saw with the charges that we are paying for MMSD treatment. Our flows did not go up. The, the amount that we're selling did not go up. We, we basically attributed it back to new flow monitoring systems that MMSD put in in late 2015 and early 2016. And that would explain the sudden jump that we had. It was basically an eight percent increase above what we had planned for. So we're attributing that to new flow meters and they're more accurate. So we're, we're still at those, those same flows that we had last year, we, we still have those same flows this year. That being said, we did find one contributing source of INI that we are working with out in the industrial park. Harder Corporation has four sources of INI in their grinder, in their grinder station. So we're, we're taking in groundwater into the sanitary sewer system, so we're going to be cleaning that up, we're working with those folks. And then the joint interceptor that Madison and Manona share going into the backside of the treatment plant, we have money dedicated in 2017 to replace that line. City of Madison is going to be waiting till approximately December, January timeframe to do that work. So if we haven't spent that money yet this year, it's going to be coming through at capital budget time to carry that money over to 2018 and the bill will be, will be paid in, in early 2018. So that's another significant source of INI. But other than that, we, we did achieve our grade of A once again. There's no, no big issues with our sanitary sewer system and we should feel good about that, so.
Any questions? Alder Honquist?
Dan, the spot that you were talking about over on industrial park in the grinder station, is that? Help me understand, is that happening on private property or after, or they might not have a sanitary meter, so it would be not determined, or is that happening public right away?
It, it's on private property. Their, their sewer discharge sits below the main. So they have a private grinder station to, the, the waste for that building goes to this grinder station, it pumps it up to the sanitary sewer, then flows by gravity. What we found is the, the seams of the concrete structure are leaking. So there's groundwater infiltration between the seams. There is a, a surface swale that receives surface drainage and then there's a, like a two inch hole at the ground level that back when they put this in, it was a point that they had a metal bar in so a crane could set it in place. They never mortared that close. So we're getting surface water runoff into that grinder station. There is a, looks like a four inch drain tile coming into that grinder station as well. So that's, that's roof drains from, from the Harder Corporation and any sump pumps or whatever that they may have. I mean, those are all direct sources of groundwater or clear water that shouldn't be going to MMSD, so.
So I follow up to that piece of when there are items identified such as that, and this is probably just one of a few different pieces, so not to pick on the scenario, where we know the INI is coming from work that was done? Is there charges associated with that or is it, let's look to remedy and move forward versus backwards?
All charges to fix the problem are their costs. We give them 30 days to make the repairs, but we are willing to work with them if they have to line up a special contractor to come in and, and do the work. We are in, in communication with them or the folks, but all charges are theirs. As far as back billing, we really have no way of knowing how much water they contributed. But as far as water consumed in the structure, that's being metered.
Okay.
Yep.
Alder Kitzler?
Do they have a separate meter? Is that how you identified it? Or how do you identify that these private businesses or residences have these INI issues?
Physical inspection. We, we, we had two areas in that part of town where City of Madison had no record of how they got rid of their sanitary sewer and we had no record. We thought they were billing, they thought we were billing. So it got to the point where we scheduled to go in and di test. And it is in fact in Manona's sanitary sewer system. That being said, we can go back and bill them for two years of, of back charges based on water consumption. We're going to do that. So we'll, we'll capture two years, the past two years of sanitary charges.
So they were being billed for sanitary?
By either, by either city. Yeah.
And, and was this just by chance that we noticed this kind of glitch and then figured it out, or is it a routine inspection that?
Well, every, every time that we do a, a water meter replacement or change out or any issue that we have, we conduct a, what's called a cross connection survey. And that's another requirement by the DNR. And that's where we look at sump pump discharges. We look at floor drains, we look at utility sink for, for air gaps, water softeners for air gaps. Those are all things that DNR state that, or require that municipalities have to do. We are responsible to the last tap for the quality of water. So that's why we have to do this. But why we went into Harder Corporation was because after sitting down with City of Madison and MMSD a year and a half ago to figure out this industrial park INI issue, they, they asked us about these addresses, so we kind of researched it together. But it got to the point where we had to go in and, and di test it to, to really pinpoint where it was coming from or where it was discharging to. So. Gotcha.
Anything else? Alder Wood?
So just for clarity, we're not talking about sanitary sewer leaking out. It's water getting into it that shouldn't be getting into it. And we're being, that then eventually goes to MMSD and we get billed on a volume basis by MMSD.
Right. But, but to, I guess add even more clarity to that, this facility was not being billed for sanitary sewer from the City of Manona. But yes, it's a sanitary waste water is not getting out into the ground. It's clear water from the ground or drain systems coming into the, our, our sanitary sewer system, so.
Anything else? All in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Dan, I have one last question. What, it didn't matter about the vote, if that's okay? And that had to do, you mentioned that there were a couple addresses that Madison asked about?
The other one was in the City of Madison. Okay. Yep.
Thanks.
All right, next item, reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayor, city administration. Alder Kitzler?
We are having, the library is having another meet the director, donuts and coffee, so on Saturday from nine to 11:00. So come on out. Other than that, no report?
Alder Wood?
I guess this would be the appropriate time to talk about the citizen committee membership makeup.
Okay.
I don't see it anywhere else on.
It really isn't on the agenda, it's included in the reports, I think, right?
Right, so. There's two documents, one that Leah prepared is the citizen committee members.
Thanks, Dan.
That gives when they were first appointed and the, you know, the membership of all the committees. The second document is committee membership statistics, which is actually a document, after getting that from Leah, that I went through and prepared. And it shows the, the amount of turnover that we've had in the committees in the last eight years, which was just about, just under 61%. And actually, I think it would be slightly higher. And actually, I think it would be slightly higher, because I didn't realize when I prepared it, that we were going to have a new ZBA member as well, so it's, but, so it's 61 out of 99 instead of 60. It's fairly, I mean, it speaks for itself, I guess you can evaluate whether you think the turnover, we have an average of 36 appointments a year, that's going to vary, because we have various terms of the committees. Most are three years, but some are two years. And there's some alternates that are one year, and the two committees are four and five years. So the aver, it turned out the average new appointee per year is seven and a half out of 36, so about 21 percent of the new, of the committee appointments we approve per year are new people, which was a little higher than I had expected. That doesn't mean that, it's, that's the, also the average per year for all eight years, it's not, you can't add it up, in other words. So, but, you know, there are a couple of things that kind of jump out. The Public Works Committee hasn't had a new member since 2008, whereas there are some committees that have actually had more than 100 percent of their membership turnover in those eight years. There are, I think, three citizen members who serve on two or more committees, one of them serves on three committees, which seems a little excessive to me, but that's, so.
Does anybody have any comments? Alda, Alda Holmquist?
I think mine has less to do with the makeup, although I, I think it was helpful to get a kind of a snapshot of where we've been, and more around has, have, we as a group been more specifically. The mayor thought about a procedure going forward for appointments, and if there are new procedures, are there pieces that you need us to know when anticipating open seats?
I think what I'd like to do, I'd like some time to think about this, but what I'm inclined to do at a minimum is in maybe late February or in March of every year, since these appointments are all up in April, send a letter to everyone whose appointment is up. In particular, people who've been on the committees a long time, just, you know, checking to see if they do want to remain on, mentioning that we have, in many cases, we have other people, you know, people who, who have applied, who we haven't been able to appoint because there hasn't been any turnover. Something else we need to keep in mind, though, is that there are some committees that we rarely if ever get any applications for, so we don't want to be, you know, suggesting people leave committees when we don't have anyone to take their place either. So there's, there's some things to think about, but I think, I think it is something we need to consider doing something about in the future. Anyone else have any, and I would keep the council apprised of that. Alda Kitzler?
I was just going to say, generally, you know, I was, I was surprised with all of our conversations that there, I don't know the best way to word this, there weren't a lot of people that were on committees longer, I mean frankly, and that there was as much, not saying, you know, 60 percent if you look at the last eight years, or generally 20 percent if you look at year to year, is the appropriate number, but, I mean, I was surprised. The other thing I would kind of add to your, your process maybe is pushing and having a conversation with department heads that run this, because they might, you know, they might be able to voice their opinion a little bit more, and have a little bit different perspective on an individual. So I think kind of having their input and ideas. And, so the last thing I'll add is, you know, it's interesting, and I know you're correct, there are some committees that don't have applications, but we've been pretty successful in the past getting a number of people, which I've been very happy with, so hopefully that continues, not saying it will, but hopefully that interest remains, so.
And we could do more promotion on the radio station and the city website, and that isn't to say that just because you've been on a long term means you're not.
Right.
You know, a contributing member of the committee, because that isn't true either. So it's, it's a complicated.
Yeah.
Issue. Anything else? So Doug, was there any other, that was it for the reports?
Yep.
You wanted to talk about? Do you have any other report?
No.
Okay, Alda Holmquist?
No report that I'm aware of.
Alda Kerr?
No report.
Okay. City Clerk?
Just reporting that the Board of Review is complete. We had one walk-in case where the assessment was sustained after quite a debate, and the, and Walmart did, their hearing was waived, they did come in. We expect to hear from them, and, through the court, and so we'll see what happens with that. Tonight, after these licenses have been all approved, so we'll be working, Aleen and I, on getting licenses out to businesses, following up with businesses who owe us fees yet, and remind them they need to get some operators. And other than that, oh, we do have a major project coming up for Aleen and I to work on, the four-year maintenance of voter registration forms, which actually takes place every two years, but looks at your voter history for the last four years. So if somebody has not voted in the last four years, they get a letter from the Wisconsin Elections Commission, and we need to, Aleen and I need to follow up with the letters, and then we'll do a major purge of all of the voter registration forms, so that's, that'll be our summer.
Okay. City Administrator Little, or I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Are you able to shed a little bit more light on the Walmart? You said they're appealing it, is this related to?
We have not heard it, yes, they're using the dark store theory.
So they are?
In their argument, they hired a firm who was representing all the Walmarts throughout the state. Last year, they did come to the, to our Board of Review, and, and the hearing was requested to be waived by our assessor. This year, it was requested to be waived by Walmart. So our anticipation is that we'll hear from, we will hear through legal means whether they're going to come, go forward. We haven't heard anything, but, you know, because it was just last week, so, but it's probably going to occur.
Do they have a, a time limit?
They have 90 days from when they receive, the certified letter that I sent them was mailed on June 1st, the day after the hearing, and so they have 90 days from receipt of that letter, notification, and, so.
Thanks.
Alda Wood?
I don't, I don't recall how long Walmart has been there. I know when they went in, there were some conditions on their, their zoning and occupancy permit, and some representations made. I don't know if, if any of that has to do with the assessed value, or if it even could or not.
I know that the city attorney is aware of that contract that we have with on that agreement, that will come into play in our, in the case.
Okay. And then the other comment is, there is, you may have all seen in the league, I think it was the league newsletter, that there is, are bills in the Senate and expected to be introduced in the Assembly, addressing the dark store theory and the other, I guess it's the Walgreens, overturning the Walgreens case.
Sounds like many have signed on to that.
Right, with enough, at least in, yeah, it's not like enough sponsors that if they all vote for it, it'll, it would pass.
Yeah, the thing is, it will pass until next year, I understand, and so Walmart and maybe other big boxes are maybe going to try this one last ditch effort this year. So, I don't, you know, that's as much as I, did you have something?
I was just going to say, you should contact your representatives to make sure they support this.
They do, I did contact Mark Miller and Jimmy Anderson, and both are, were on board with us, and so I sent them that, our resolution, you know, copy of it signed, and so they're aware that the, of the council's opinion, you know, so, well, we can, but, I mean, not saying don't contact them, just saying they have been contacted.
Thanks.
Anything else? City Administrator Little?
Just a few exciting things coming up. Our tour of city facilities is June 20th at 3:30, it looks like everyone can make it. The mural dedication will be Saturday at noon, there will be a performance by the Ho Chunk Nation, so that will be fun, I'm sure there might be dancing included in there for everyone. Let's see, the, the decision went to Circuit Court regarding the opt-out provisions, and it was decided in our favor, and I believe I sent you an email explaining that in a little bit more detail. And you may have also noticed that outside of the library here, they do have the rapid flash beacon installed between Nichols and the library here, so we're glad to see that go up.
Which I used yesterday, and it does work.
Excellent. So, that's all I have.
Okay, I just have one announcement, I know I've mentioned this to some of you, but just so everyone knows, we, at this point, we are not planning on meeting on July 3rd, council meeting, so unless something comes up, but be prepared for kind of a lengthy meeting next time, because we're going to be, the plan right now is to be doing an initial read of the Riverfront Developer Agreement and several other administrative things that we need to take care of for that, so.
So it won't be rescheduled to the 5th, you're saying?
No.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Not as of now. If something comes up that we have to do last minute, it would be hopefully something quick, but right now, I'm hoping not to have anything that, for the first meeting in July. Okay, so we're on to appointments, and there are many of them, which I'm going to read, because it's not really a consistent agenda. First of all, the Alderman, Alder Person Committee appointments, which are going to be effective immediately. First of all, Brian Holmquist, Finance and Personnel, Plan Commission Chair, Public Safety Committee Chair and Senior Commission Chair, Andrew Kitzler, Community Development Authority, Library Board, Parks and Recreation Board Chair, and Tourism Commission, Jennifer Kerr, Community Media Committee Chair, Mass Transit Commission Co-Chair. Mass Transit Commission is kind of an outlier, we're the two Alders co-chair, that really isn't the case with anything else. Public Safety Committee and Public Works Committee, Nancy Moore, Facilities Committee Chair, Parks and Rec Board, Plan Commission, Sustainability Committee Chair, Chad Spate, Mass Transit Commission Co-Chair, Public Works Committee Chair, Sustainability Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals Chair, and Doug Wood, Community Development Authority, Finance and Personnel, Landmarks Commission Chair and License Review Chair. Then appointments to various committees, to the Library Board, Rosalyn Ebel and Erin Monroe-Nai, those are both new members. Zoning Board of Appeals, Brad Schweiger is a new member, and Brett Blommy is a reappointment. Landmarks Commission, Molly Groupie is a new member, Rick Bernstein is a reappointment. Community Development Authority, Scott Kelly and John Surtick are both reappointed. Plan Commission, Rob Stein, Chris Homburg, both reappointed. Sustainability, Sue Vogt, reappointed. Tourism Commission, Eric Bunting, Brett Sackett, Mike Striegel, and Mark Howtaker, I think those are all reappointments.
Yes.
Community Media Committee, Susan Manning, Carl Davic, Bob Boeker, Eric Redding, Dan Olson, all reappointments, and Mass Transit Commission, Andrew Petro, also a reappointment. So is there a motion to approve these appointments?
No move.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointments are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn, or?
I have a question. So, in the, the citizen committee members, as of May 16th, so quite, oh, ways down, there were some names that were in strikeout, and are those being removed?
On that list that was in the reports, yes, for instance, for Library Board, two, Val Edwards and Brett Blommy have both resigned from Library Board, so two of the new, the new appointments to Library Board are taking their place.
Replacing those.
Right.
And then there, the, there's one that's listed as Sustainability Committee, I believe it actually is Senior Commission?
Sue Vogt?
Um.
She is on Sustainability.
No, in the packet, down, down the, towards the end of the packet, on page 71.
Yeah.
Oh, in the packet, she, okay.
Good catch.
Oh, Gwen Fight.
Well, the whole, the title of that is titled Sustainability.
Which means there's not, Sustainability isn't.
Isn't here. We will check with Leah about that. I didn't, because Leah put this together from her spreadsheet, I assume. I know they're there on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, they're on the tab, so, yeah.
Yeah, you're correct, though, what's, everyone listed under Sustainability Committee is actually Senior Commission, and.
That's it.
Okay.
Excuse me, then Sue Vogt is Senior Commission?
No, no.
Okay.
I'll explain when we're done, yeah.
I got it. I understand, I'm just, I'm looking at this, I got it.
Right. I wasn't sure which, I, I thought he was talking about the actual appointments, and not, not the list that was included. Okay, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.